No, she's not here.
Please put signs up.
Thompson.
Would you, are you gonna ask me?
I'd be happy to talk to John. Yes, our moment, Swasey, is the... Blue fire truck they got over there. Swasey's got a blue fire truck.
That's backwards. That's gonna confuse a lot of people.
Big blue.
You need one? You're gonna use one.
They're on the table.
There's gotta be one on the table.
There is.
Yeah, it is down there.
You wanna slide 'em over? Steve set 'em up.
So that was you? Oh.
Was that right? Okay.
There usually is one down at the table in case people...
There is still one down there.
That was for Diane.
Yeah, well, yeah, now it's...
We have an action.
Now it's Joe.
Okay. Here, there's one there. Good evening, Danvers. Welcome to our September 17th, 2019 meeting. Gardner, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have an approval of the minutes, please?
I move we approve the minutes of September 3rd.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience with new public business that's not on the agenda, you can go to the microphone. Okay, no new business, thank you. The board is in receipt of an application by Paul Minsky, 15 Lynn Shore Drive, Lynn, for reappointment as civil constable in the town of Danvers. Somebody here to speak to that? Please go to the microphone and introduce yourself. Is everything in order, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, all the qualifications for renewal have been met.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Paul Minsky. I'd like to be reappointed as a constable for Danvers.
That's it? That's it, okay?
That's what I want. I've been doing it for many years.
Bill?
No questions.
Gardner?
No, the paperwork's all in order and I'm happy for the history and details you wanted to do. Thank you.
Diane?
I almost said, "Thank you."
And?
Excellent background.
David, thank you.
Thank you.
What's the will of the board?
Move to accept the applicant as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Paul.
Bye.
Aye, thank you.
A public hearing will be held under Chapter 138 of the general laws on the application of Massachusetts Part I Holding Company, LLC DBA Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar, 100 Independence Way, Robert Lavoy, manager, for change of ownership in connection with the all-alcoholic license at that location. Is someone here to speak to this?
Good evening.
Introduce yourself, please.
My name is Pat Lennox. I'm one of the owners of the current business and I am here to answer any possible questions. I know that the application, which was prepared by a bunch of attorneys, is pretty lengthy and involved. The process is really actually pretty simple. What we're trying to do, and I would be glad to explain that if you'd like.
Please.
Basically, the restaurant is owned by an LLC, which is owned by several individuals, several being seven of us. And we are going through some tax planning and have hired a bunch of very intelligent attorneys and tax accountants. And they have suggested that we do this structure that's being proposed. So although this is mentioned as a change of ownership, it's not a change of ownership. It's the exact same people that own the restaurant today that will own the restaurant when we're done with this change of ownership.
So if I may, Mr. Clerk, it's not a change of ownership, but it's advertised as such. The paperwork in order?
Oh, you can answer him.
Mr. Chairman, the application as presented indicates change of ownership interest, LLC members, LLP partners and trustees.
But you're saying there's no change in those aforementioned people?
Correct. The same people that own the existing LLC will own the end LLC. The same exact ownership. Nothing will change from an operations standpoint, nothing will change from an ownership standpoint. It's just the same. This is at the recommendation of some attorneys and tax accountants.
I get it, okay. Diane, you want to ask some questions?
Okay, I can go first.
Okay. David?
I'm assuming, you know, if there's some technical appearance of irregularity in ownership or words, as long as the ABCC and their attorneys happen to agree to it, what do we care? You know, 'cause it's legit. Then it's gonna be so, I say, approved.
Yeah, and I understand and I, we appreciate your time because obviously, we understand that we've gotta go through and take up your time. Just to change a name, essentially, it's the same people that own it, but that's the process that we...
And it's a process we like to adhere to.
And us as well. That's why we're here.
Thank you. Gardner?
I have no questions. My presumption is that the liquor manager of record remains.
The ownership issues, as mentioned by the applicant here this evening, is the only thing that's changed.
Thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Diane?
No. So you're really just changing the same members to a different entity? Really, that's it?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine.
Very good.
Can I just mention one thing? The attorneys asked me that when I'm here, if I could make sure that within the application on page seven, that the date of the meeting is specified. They, it's August 7th?
We received that information this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any comments, questions?
I move we close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What's the will of the board?
I move that we accept the application with the date added to page seven as requested.
It is, it is.
Okay.
Second motion?
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Lennox, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Go Pats.
A public hearing will be held to consider whether the license to sell alcoholic beverages held by Mexicali Grill, 29 Andover Street, Lefty McMiddle Donald, manager should be suspended, revoked or limited in any way. Mr. Town Manager?
I believe, I don't know, if you'd like to hear a summary again from the chief or if you'd like to hear directly from the restaurant? I think that's up to the board.
I think we'd like to hear a summary from the chief, if he's willing.
Yes.
Good evening, Pat Ambrose, Chief of Police. On August 5th of 2019, the Danvers police conducted alcohol compliance checks throughout the town of Danvers. There was a public notification prior to this and tonight, there was a violation at the Mexicali Restaurant on 114 in Danvers, specifically a violation of 204 CMR 2.052, permitting an illegality on the license premise to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 3434(c), which is selling or furnishing an alcoholic beverage to a person under 21. Specifically, on August 5th at 17:23 hours, Sergeant Paul De Sari along with Officer Chase went to the Mexicali Restaurant with an 18-year-old female that was working as the operative to go into the establishments. She went into the establishment, ordered a Bud Light bottle, did not produce a ID. The bottle was served along with some nachos to her. She stood up immediately without any conversation, turned around, went back out, notified the officers of what took place. The officers then entered into the restaurant, identified themselves. They spoke to the manager and identified the bartender. Excuse me. At that time, they spoke to the bartender, which was identified as Jose De La Cruz Flores. And the manager on duty was Aurelia Margarita Lepe Maldonado. And they notified her what transpired. The Bud Light and the chips were still sitting on the bottle when they went in there. Everything else was in compliance. The folks were cooperative. They understood that there was a violation that took place and you folks would be notified of the violation. Those are essentially it.
Thank you, Chief. Somebody from Mexicali like to speak?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Nicholas Felici and I'm the attorney representing Mexicali Grill, the corporate name, Danvers Tacos, Inc. As you may know from having this licensed hearing a year ago when the license was granted, this is a Mexican family restaurant where the owner, Mr. Francisco Lepe, along with his sister Aurelia Lepe, the manager of record, have tried to establish a very good, quiet, family-style Mexican restaurant here in Danvers, similar to the several other ones that him and his family have had in the greater Boston area. His policy at this restaurant, like it is in his other restaurants, is that everybody must be completely tip-certified before they even begin training to become a server or bartender. Mr. De La Cruz is a bartender who has been with them for several years before Danvers in their other restaurant and has always been a very good bartender, stellar employee, has gone through tips training on a couple of different occasions. Every two years, they renew it. We have his certification here for his latest renewal a few months ago. And at this particular evening, Mrs. Lepe, the manager of record, was there at the hostess station as she usually is and she was seating some patrons when unfortunately, this young lady was served. Mr. De La Cruz missed it. Their policy is to scan, use their scanner and ID and scan each and every person who appears to be under the age of 30. That's their policy. He missed it. He's not saying anything else. He did miss it. Gave her a Bud Light without asking for her ID. And manager Lepe didn't see it at the time. She was seating a few patrons in another booth and by the time she looked up and saw that this lady had been served, obviously, the mistake had been made. So they cooperated completely. That's the chief indicated. And Mr. De La Cruz was suspended for two days because that is their policy. If you don't, you know, abide by the policy of carding and scanning the IDs of anybody under 30, you get suspended for two days. Second strike and you're out. That's their policy. So a good bartender who's been with them for several years before this here in Danvers, he's been with them for a full year since it's been open in Danvers, never a problem. Mrs. Maldonado Lepe is here to answer any questions you would have about either the policies or procedures that this family entails day in, day out over there. And we apologize, obviously, that we have to be before the board on something like this because they do take it very seriously, this family. And to see even one little strike happen is something that they are not very happy with. And obviously, Mr. De La Cruz has been warned accordingly. So we'd be glad to take any questions that you may have. Like I say, the owner, his sister, the manager of record, and Mr. De La Cruz are here to show that they take this seriously and to answer any questions that the board may have. But it's clearly something that, he missed it this one time. It was one bottle of Bud Light and that was it.
Thank you. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will reserve any comments until the end of the discussion when we decide what we want to do. I just want to make the observation that there's no questioning as to what the police came up with and you are agreeing with what happened.
Certainly, there's no question of them. They indicated that to the officers at the time. No question that there was a bottle of Bud served to a lady that was an out-of-age.
And I appreciate the fact that they're all here in person at this hearing. That's all I'll say at this present time.
Thank you. David?
Nothing, thank you.
Gardner?
Could I ask, through you to the town clerk, has there been any other violations under this ownership in the past 24 months?
Mexicali was before us, before the board on April 3rd, 2019. But the board voted no action on that issue.
Okay, there was no action. Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
All set. Diane?
No, I want to thank you for admitting to a mistake. It happens, obviously. If we do find you in violation, the next time, you'll have to close, which is bad. I think suspension of two days is adequate. I don't believe in this firing everybody thing. But I gotta say, it's in the newspaper before they go out checking. They give you a warning, so... But Bud Light is something I would make sure I card everybody for. Thank you.
So these compliance checks are done for a purpose, for a reason. Notice is given. We really shouldn't have to give notice because we expect you folks to have a policy. You say you have a policy. So it's beyond me how a young person under 21 can walk in and get a bottle of Bud. It's just beyond me. Whether you're busy, you're not busy, if you have a policy, you should adhere to that policy. There should be no excuses. And it's not just a bottle of Bud. It's serving a minor alcohol. So at this time, it is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience with any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll go back to the board. What you feel is an appropriate action tonight for serving a minor.
I'll go with the first step, which is one day suspension held in a ban. I believe it's for 12 months. If there's no infractions, we move on. Just exactly what our rules say.
Gardner?
I'll second the motion and I would like some discussion.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we have a motion and a second discussion?
Before you two...
Yep.
Does the chief wish to be heard on disposition?
No, I do not.
Sure.
No, I do not.
Thank you.
So we have a motion for one day held in a ban for one year.
Second.
It's been seconded. So for discussion purposes, the maker of the motion want to say anything?
No.
Thank you. Gardner?
It just, the only thing is, we did have you here on April 3rd. We took no action because of the... There was insufficient... We felt, some of the board members felt there was insufficient people, reason to find you then. But it was the same manager at the time on April 3rd and again at this time. I'm wondering if there isn't more strident steps you can take. We have other establishments that card everybody, period. We don't, they don't set a 30 days. And they have other establishments, and I appreciate that you scan everybody. That's a good thing. We have other establishments that do their own compliance checks. On their own dime, they send people in to do their own checks to make sure this doesn't happen because it's better that you catch it internally than externally. So I certainly wouldn't add that as a condition to the motion, but I think that you would consider some more corporate-wide or restaurant-wide solutioning that affirms the policy you already have. That's all, thank you.
Bill?
No comments?
I just would, at this point, say that in April, you caught a break from us. We didn't feel there was a sufficiently exacting facts laying out in front of us. We, you caught a break from us at that point. I'm totally in line with the proposal tonight because it's within our guidelines that you'd have a one-day suspension held in a r- for a year, realizing that, that if nothing happens in a year, that isn't served. If something happens within a year, that would be served and you most likely would be getting a three-day suspension that would be held in escrow unless it was a very flagrant violation. So I'll be in support of this motion that was made tonight.
Any other comments? So, in my opinion, you got off with no action the last time and you're getting the smallest penalty we can give or give this particular instance. I'm not going to be voting in favor of it, but I just hope I don't see you back here in front of us ever. What's, are all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Thank you again for all of you coming. We do appreciate that.
We appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
The board is in receipt of an application from Danvers ICL1 LLC DBA North Auto Annex for administrative DBA name change on a Class II dealer's license at that location, approved at the September 3rd, 2019 meeting, to Danvers ICL1 LLC DBA 1 North Pre-Owned at 241 Newberry Street, Danvers. Richard Collins, President. Is Mr. Collins here to explain all these letters?
Mr. Chairman, Town Clerk Collins can explain for the applicant.
Any relation?
No.
Okay.
Not at all. It was apparent after the board unanimously approved the establishment of a second-class dealer's license at that location at 241 Newberry Street, that Honda was not happy with the wording or the name of the DBA name of the business. So the applicant came into the office and spoke with my assistant at the time and I indicated to them that we would try to put it on the agenda for the next meeting and I would speak to it. It's just a simple name change from North Auto Annex to One North Pre-Owned. And it was, I have a copy of a communication that they had emailed to us.
Thank you for the explanation. Very good. Diane, any questions? David?
Thank you, no.
Gardner?
All set.
And Bill?
No questions.
What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark and Rita.
The board will hear from the police chief regarding two liquor violations. Chief?
Good evening. I have two liquor violations to present to you tonight for the board. First happening on August 17th at approximately 11:16 hours. Specifically, the violation was 204 CMR 2.052, permitting an illegality on the license premise to it, MGL 138, Section 69, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to an intoxicated person. On August 17th, the officers were dispatched to Breakaway, located at 221 Newberry Street in Danvers, for an intoxicated and disorderly person. Upon arrival, the officers were informed that a male patron had been attempting to start a fight with other customers. The staff informed officers that the patron was getting out of hand and he was asked to leave but refused. Officers spoke to the party, observed that he was slurring his speech. He was unsteady on his feet. Officers performed fields of variety tests in which he failed. Officers determined that he was clearly intoxicated. He was placed into protective custody. At this point in time, the owner of Breakaway Golf, Joseph Crowley, was spoken to as well as the bartender of duty, Joanne Parcellin. Parcellin informed officers that the subject was in the bar for approximately an hour, was served two Dewar's scotches and paid for it in cash, in which we received the two individual receipts, sales receipts for the transactions of the Dewars. Also to be noted, which isn't noted in the initial violation sheet, that male subject, after being released to a responsible adult, was allowed to get back into his car and subsequently was arrested for OUI shortly thereafter being released. That is the first violation.
Any questions for the chief on the first one? Anyone on the board?
Chief, it's, there's always a question of if the, if the location called the officer because they felt someone was getting out of hand, then how do you kind of determine whether it was a Good Samaritan? You know, the person may have come in inebriated or whatever happened that they didn't appear inebriated when they were served, but obviously, it was the tipping point that caused them to be that way. I, we always balance the question of, you know, are they doing the right thing by calling to say, "Hey, this guy's getting out of hand. We don't want him here. He's starting to raise rival." Versus, so I guess that'll be more questioning when we come, if they come before us.
Yeah, I understand what the board is asking. It is something that we always try to make a judgment on. This person was clearly combative. He was, he was clearly intoxicated. And it's our opinion that the additional Dewars that were handed to him while he was at this location were or was a trans, a serving to an intoxicated person, which only added to this intoxicated state that he was in and the problems that we had to handle.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? What's the, what would the board like to do on this particular one?
Mr. Chairman, I move we ask the owners of Breakaway to answer to this finding, 204 CMR 2.052, permitting illegality, the premise, to discuss any action, revocation or suspension.
Is October 15th okay with you?
That's fine if that's what our docket is. Yes, thank you.
Anybody?
Second.
Comments? We have a first motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Chief?
Thank you. Thank you. The second violation occurred August 30th of this year at approximately 11:34 PM. Again, it was 204 CMR 2.052 permitting an illegality on the license premise to wit Mass. General Law 138, Section 69, sale or delivery of an alcoholic beverage to an intoxicated person. There was three counts to this call. This happened at Osborne Tavern, 49 Maple Street in town, on August 30th at 11:34. Officers were dispatched to Osborne Tavern for a report of an intoxicated female getting into a car. This was a third-party call to the police station, reporting that they were seeing an intoxicated person getting into a car. The responding officers located the female sitting inside the parked vehicle, and they determined that she was clearly intoxicated. Fortunately, she was not operating the vehicle. She stated that she had been at the establishment with two family members. They located those two family members inside this, in Osbornes. Both of those females both were intoxicated, according to the officers, and that's what they determined in speaking to them and through observations. All three females were unfit to drive and were provided transportation safely home. Sergeant Shabowitz was on scene. He spoke to the owner, Joel Hartnett, and he asked to speak to the bartender. The bartender was identified as Michelle Bristol. Ms. Bristol produced one bar tab for all three females. The tab was opened at 20:59, and it was closed approximately an hour later, I mean, excuse me, 23:08, with a total of 10 drinks being served. The bartender stated that she served, the female that we found as intoxicated outside getting into the female, into the car, three Kahlua drinks. Second female was served three 16-ounce shipwreck beers and a shot of Fireball, and the third female was served two Tito vodkas and a shot of Fireball. Again, all three ladies were deemed to be intoxicated, exhibited signs of intoxication that the officers determined while speaking and dealing with the folks. All three were incapable of driving, and they were subsequently brought home, so there wasn't an issue with their operation under the influence.
Questions from the Board for the Chief? Anyone?
Chief, do you know what a Fireball is?
Specifically, no, I don't.
May I? It's, Fireball is a brand of whiskey. It's a shot of whiskey, cinnamon whiskey.
Cinnamon.
Okay. And a Tito? What's a Tito?
Tito is a type of vodka that's mixed in. It's a very, I'm sorry, tequila. It's a type of tequila.
Okay, thank you.
No, Tito is --
Tito vodka.
Oh, Tito vodka, okay.
Yeah, it's the new thing.
Mr. Chairman, through you, and it may not be to the, I'm, as we always ask for, it may not be to the Chief directly, but as we always ask for tip certifications for everybody who serves, or some others, is there, is there a way to get in the tip certification some identification of responsible service, as in how many drinks in a one-hour or two-hour period? In one case, we have several drinks, and this is over a two-hour and nine-minute period. I'm wondering if we can get like a tips guideline for the Board or not?
I think they, been numerous classes for tip certification in town, if I'm not mistaken. Is there any material from those classes that we can?
I'm not familiar with any set guidelines that say two drinks in an hour or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the Chiefs?
I move we --
Any other questions for the Chiefs?
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Would one of your officers be able to come if we bring these folks before us to testify?
Yes.
Thank you. What's the will of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we ask the owners of Osborne Tavern LLC to come before the Board in regards to RE 204 CMR 205 permitting illegality on the license premises, to discuss any action, revocation, or suspension.
Is October 15th, all right?
Sure.
Thank you. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And I would appreciate if one of the officers was here to --
I will have them there.
I appreciate it. Thank you. The Board will consider a one-year extension of an appointment to the Danvers Housing Authority Board. I believe we have a letter from the Executive Director addressed to Mr. Collins regarding a reappointment of a reappointment. And the person that's being reappointed is not here? No. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Last time we did this, I do recall that the application was made, and we did ask for a letter from the Executive Director at that time, and acted on that action, acted on that letter.
That was in the past, correct?
Yep.
Anything else?
I have no problems with this. I don't think anybody needs to come in. It's pretty self-explanatory.
So, my thought is, we're just keep doing the same thing, and we're waiting for the Massachusetts law to be changed.
Right.
And just to keep reappointing. I'm not in favor, but I'd be more in favor of no action.
I wouldn't want to leave a Board with just four votes.
The State's doing that. Any other comments? Bill?
I just think our responsibility is to make sure that the Board is of full number, if possible, and I have no objection to reappointing Mr. Eisenhower for another term, one-year term.
Okay. David?
It's okay with me, too. He's well-known, so having him come here doesn't really seem to I would feel. And the Board, the Commissioners, the Housing Commissioners voted for and favor to support the reappointment, so I think we should do that.
Very good.
You know, Dan, we could actually be proactive on this. I mean, waiting for the State is like, you know.
Let's, we need to do something.
So, you know, I would do this one, and then I might go back to the Board and just say, can you find the, what is it, a tenant? We don't want to --
We're, so, the Clerk's Office reached out to the State last week. Until the new regulations are promulgated by DHCD, this is in holding pattern, it's going on two and a half years now.
But we can appoint anybody, can't we?
This is no longer a local appointment. That's the change, is the way that this fifth seat is assigned is no longer a local appointment. It'll be spelled out in the new regulations that don't exist yet.
We're appointing right now, so what's the difference if we, once the guides come out, we have to follow it?
Well, he was the --
But Mr. Eisenhower is continuously getting appointed.
As the fifth member when the announcement of the changing regs was made, so the --
Right.
What these Boards are doing across the Commonwealth are simply reappointing that fifth member. What happens when that fifth member does not want to be reappointed? We haven't gotten an answer on that.
Because this could go, I mean, it's the State. This could go on for another 10 years.
We don't have the local authority, though, to choose somebody else for that fifth seat.
So, we can't pick somebody else?
Correct.
Okay, I was just going to say, why not, if the tenants, I like the idea of a tenant, but, okay, Dan, I won't bother.
So, Steve, there's no action we can take to be proactive?
We've, I presume that the housing authorities are asking the DHCD to accelerate this process, which is now two and a half years old. We've, at the staff level, reached out to DHCD to discuss this, you know, to try to get a sense from their staff. They don't have a timeline, so that the folks that Joe's office was able to contact said we have no more information than you do about when this is coming. We could send a letter, you know, encouraging, but, you know, at this point, it's, you know, the State Agency needs to issue these new regulations, which will spell out the process.
Thank you. So, what's the will of the Board?
Move as, move to accept Mr. Eisenhower for one year.
Second.
Discussion?
I would be, you know, would the Board be open to the Chairman sending a letter? I realize the Town has. I agree with your position, Mr. Chairman. I think that we're just sitting here waiting for them to take action. They're putting us in an untenable position. We have to take this applicant, or then we, or we are short. We're down to a form of the Board.
I understand, sure. I'm sure that we can come up with a letter to send in to the proper people.
From the Board.
From the Board.
Then I would amend the motion to include a letter from the Chairman.
Thank you.
Good point. If he resigns.
All set with that amendment? Diane?
I'm sorry.
I amended it to have the Chairman send the letter.
For the letter from the Chairman, sure.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. That's a waste, that keeps wasting our time. The Board will discuss and consider a vote to adopt the fiscal year 2020 Management Compensation Plan. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You received in your packets last week a memorandum from me summarizing the evaluation process for all of the members of the management team, other than me, who participate in the Management Compensation Plan. This is a process that starts, really, it's an ongoing process, so as we're completing one fiscal year's process, we're starting to put in place the objectives for the subsequent year. Just a quick background, the Management Compensation Plan in Danvers was established by Town Meeting in 1979, so this is actually the 40th year that it's been in place, and I, you know, much like Winston Churchill said about democracy being the worst form of government except for all other forms of government, I think our performance evaluation is the worst evaluation system except for all other evaluation systems, which is an indirect way of saying I think it's a pretty good evaluation system, but there's no such thing as a perfect evaluation system. The system we have, joking aside, has stood up pretty well to the test of time. It's been reviewed periodically over time. 2002, it was thoroughly reviewed by a human resources consultant, and then a year and a half ago, using a community compact grant from the State, we were able to bring in HRS, Human Resources Services, Inc., which is a small consulting firm out of Andover, with a lot of municipal experience that helped us review and update the grade classification for each of the management positions, as well as the salary ranges for those positions, and the, there were some adjustments made last year as part of that, but overall, the plan was vetted and affirmed as a good program for the Town. So, I'll provide some of the highlights. You know, as I mentioned, this is a process that started fall of 2018. Each of the management team members are evaluated against five core performance areas. They happen to be the same as my evaluation, those being leadership and strategic planning, financial management, personnel management, customer service, and then general duties. Those five areas account for 40%, I'm sorry, 50% of the weighted evaluation, and then in consultation with their direct supervisor, each of the members of the team identifies two performance objectives that are timely. So, example being, you know, the public works directors for David Smith School is on his list this year as one of his top priorities. The water withdrawal permit is a timely priority. You received a list in this packet of each of the, what's really most of the projects that were adopted for the year that we're concluding. It's in, is one of the exhibits, I believe it's Exhibit A, which were the, you know, each of the items identified as objectives achieved during the year. And then the smallest part of the evaluation is for the discretionary performance. These are the things that, coming into the year, you wouldn't necessarily see coming. One of the, one of the things we did this year, in years past, all of the adjustments made for the management team were merit increases. This year, we tried to split out, you know, the available funding remained largely the same, but we tried to break out cost of living adjustments, and then offer smaller merit adjustments, and the reason for that being, if the salary ranges aren't adjusted periodically, they become out of date, and people end up moving off of them, and then the plan itself doesn't become as reliable or valid as it was. So, there's a 2% COLA adjustment recommended, which is consistent with what most of our collective bargaining units received, and it's also, you know, it ties out with what the Bureau of Labor Statistics is issuing in terms of what the cost of inflation has been over the preceding 12 months. And then the merit increases as a component of this program, this year ranged from 1.5% for meets expectations up to 2.5% for outstanding performance. These adjustments will be retroactive to July 1st, if adopted, which was the start of the fiscal year, and the 2020 budget does include adequate funding to implement these adjustments, as approved through the budget process in May. A couple of notes, we had two adjustments made this year, one for the Assistant Town Manager, who assumed oversight of the human resources function for the Town within, you know, during this year, which was coupled with the reorganization of that division, which will result in some budget savings going into the fiscal year 21 budget. And then the second is for one of our newer employees, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, and that was to better line him within the range where he is. From a high level, the, sort of the curve of the performance this year is pretty consistent with what we've seen in years past. On page three of the memorandum, you'll see what the outcome of this process has been over the last four fiscal years, as well as what the average has been by performance category. So, we had three members of the team score in the outstanding category this year. We had 10 land in the exceeds expectations category, and then seven met expectations. Two members of the team who are relatively new, one started just before the end of the fiscal year, so hadn't had a chance to participate in this process. That's our Assistant Utility Director, but he'll be participating fully this year. And then the second, which hasn't been announced yet, so I might as well announce it now, we had our new Director of Operations in Public Works start last Monday, Rich Souza. He was the Assistant Director in Rockport for a couple of years. He has background as a geologist, so he understands pretty well, you know, particularly in a town where we do so much infrastructure work and we have some cleanup sites. His background aligns really well with what's on the ground here in Danvers, and he's got a great personality. He lives in town, has four kids. I've been saying he has five kids, but I, that's because I imagine once you have four, it probably feels like five. But he's fitting in well, and he started last week, so he'll be fully participating in the program that's going to start this year. Other highlights. I did include, so, as I mentioned, Exhibit, I said A, but B is the partial list of the objectives that were pursued this fiscal year. Exhibit C shows the salary range chart for each of the eight management grades that we have in Danvers. So, that chart has been adjusted by the 2%, and we try to maintain consistent percentages between the grades. This is one of the recommendations from the consultant. And then the last exhibit in your packet is where each of the management team members fall on the classification grades, and classification and grades. So, again, I would be, at this point, I'd be looking for the Board to adopt the recommended Management Compensation Plan, or ask any questions they may have at this time, and I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? A member of the Board, speak up?
No.
Nope. David, all set?
Thank you, Dan.
Gardner?
No, I got my questions answered in the executive session.
Bill?
I'll settle. We discussed in the executive session the relative comments that I would have talked about.
Thank you. What's the will of the Board?
I move that we accept the Management Compensation Plan as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Selectmen's new business. I will report to the Board that last Thursday, I spoke or testified to the Board of Health about methane gas leaks in Danvers, particular state in general, and that the gas companies aren't required to fix these leaks. So, the Board of Health is writing a letter to send to us, so that we can take action, and I'll send a letter to Senator and State Representatives, and I'll make comments when I see the letter. Thank you. Anybody else with new business? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Excuse me. Is this where we make comments about things?
No, no, just new business now. You'll have an opportunity after the, after the Town Manager.
Excuse me.
It's okay. But you can ask the Town Manager anything as he goes along.
I do have a few items. First, I'll report, we had a very successful launch last week to our Citizens Academy. The Chairman came and welcomed our class. We have 20 cadets, as we're calling them. We had 25 people apply to participate in the program, so it was competitive. The first night after Dan's welcome focused on an overview of our form of government here in Danvers, and a crash course in budgeting, and finance, and assessing, and retirement, and all of the, all of the money divisions. We have, it's a pretty good mix in the class in terms of folks who've lived here for 72 years, and some who moved here within the last 12 months, a variety of different jobs. We have a couple, one of our class participants is not actually a Danvers resident, but she is a social studies teacher in the middle school, and is essentially auditing our academy to help her develop a civics curriculum that they're going to start using at the middle school. So, she's going to participate in our class, and then I'm hoping we'll be able to participate in her classroom when she takes it back to work. So, that was very exciting, and we have, I think, eight more weeks lined up, where each Thursday, the class will get an in-depth view of a different department in town, and it'll culminate in a graduation before you, I believe, in December. So, off to a good start there. I wanted to mention, the, actually, as we speak, the Haybarn Committee is making a presentation to the Recreation Committee on the work that they've been doing, and the work that they've, the partnership with the design, the architectural design firm that supported them in sort of visioning for the building. And I anticipate probably the first meeting in November, so November 5th, the Committee will be asking to come before the Board of Selectmen to share the feedback they received from the Rec Committee, the feedback they've received from the public, and update the Board on the progress they've made in terms of their visioning for the building and the associated budgets and things like that, for potential consideration in the spring of 2020. You recall, the Town received a million-dollar Massworks grant, which is what we've been using to fund the visioning and design work to date, and we've used only a small portion of that, so there's a decent amount of that left, but we'll expect a report on November 5th on that front. And at our next meeting, October 1st, we're saving room on the agenda. We'll have an update from land use, so I believe David Fields and Aaron Henry will be here to update the Board on C1, C1A, and I1. This is the rezoning efforts for the square along High Street down to 128. They recently, so specifically what they'll be talking to the Board about is the 40R application that had to be submitted to keep the timeline for the February Town Meeting in play. You know, the ultimate decision to adopt the 40R will be made at Town Meeting, but in order to keep that option on the table, we had deadlines to meet. So, there's specific purpose for coming, we'll talk about that, but they'll be able to talk more broadly about where the project is. I'll mention quite quickly that, you know, density was a topic of discussion at the December 2017 Town Meeting, where the Maple Street I1 overlay was passed almost unanimously. At first cut, the density along the square and high will actually be lower than what was in the Maple I1, just based on, you know, approximate uses and things like that, but it'll still be compliant with 40R. But you'll, that'll be for the 10th, I'm sorry, the 1st, we'll have an update on that. Quick update on the healthcare front. I've reported out to the Board a couple of times about the process that the IAC has been working through the last year to come up with some planned design changes for implementation on July 1st of next year. No decisions have been made yet regarding that for the active employees, but retirees have started to receive have started to receive letters from the town notifying them of the plan to move back to Maya from Tufts, and also a plan to transition our 65-plus retirees who are not currently on Medicare onto Medicare. The, 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 the letters going out and the correspondence has, has encouraged folks to reach out to the HR office so that they can ask questions and understand what's going on. If any of you hear from retirees who may have received a letter and have questions, please direct them to, to the HR office. We're, we're going to have probably four or five meetings scheduled in, in this building and other buildings in town over the next two months, where retirees will be able to come in and sit with the benefit staff, sit with Maya to understand what this transition is. And I just wanted to make that, that comment, that if you're, if you get any questions, please direct them to us so that we can make sure that the, the retirees are getting accurate information about what, what this process is going to look like. And then, I think the last item I just wanted to mention briefly, you received material tonight for, for the Town Manager evaluation for the year that we ended on July, June 30th. Dan and I met to go over this agenda earlier this week, and, and his request was to have them completed and returned to Town Hall either prior to the October 1st meeting or to simply bring them to that meeting, and then Dan and I will be able to meet and review them together ahead of our October 15th meeting. And if anybody has questions in terms of how to, how to fill those out, we're happy to try to answer those. And I think that's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Would you make a note for Ann? I need a fresh copy of the sheet to fill out.
Yes.
I already filled it out, and I don't like it, so I want to change it.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like the spreadsheet template that I used last year?
You can send that along. That would be, yeah, that's fine. Yep, thank you. Consent calendar?
Move we accept the consent calendar as presented.
All in favor?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye, thank you. Correspondents' updates, Selectmen's closing comments. David, did you have something to offer? Thank you, welcome.
Once a month during the school year beginning last night for this coming year, there is a senior men's dinner down at the Senior Center, which is a lot of fun. And we always have a very interesting speaker, but last night was off the charts because Bill Clark spoke about farming and farms and the history of farming in Danvers, and it was brilliant. It was lovely. Everybody loved it. So, thank you, Bill, for doing that.
Thank you, David.
Also, to keep that dinner in mind, it's $8 for members of friends of the Senior Center and $10 otherwise. The food is wonderful. It's, it takes a couple of hours, and I hope that more people will come and join us. Also, the new flagpole down at the stadium is going to be dedicated on Friday night right before the game. Mark McDermott asked me to be sure to tell everybody about that and how grateful the veterans in Danvers are. I believe that the flagpole was put up at regular town expense at the request of the veterans. They're very happy. And the fourth item is, I don't know what, if any, any attention the town should be giving to the issue of vaping. I see that communities and states and governments around the country are becoming very concerned, as I am, because I'm afraid of chemicals like that. It's just that it should be something we, we are aware of, that people do it, that people are now dying from it, and I guess it's an un, it's something people didn't know about. And finally, every week, Dan always mentions the veterans to be remembered, and I always do, and I remember the veterans. But it occurs to me that I would like to just acknowledge the federal judges in this country and the, the employees in the federal judicial system who are getting deluged with criticisms, cases, overloads, who are doing a magnificent courageous job of, in some respects, holding the country together while we're in a nation of some turmoil involving litigation and fights and all. So, they're doing a great job, and I acknowledge gratitude for that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have three items I would like to mention. The first is, as I often do, is mention the passing of people who formerly were involved with the town, and in the past week, we lost one of our former members of the Board of Selectmen, Jack Crowley, who was quite a character. And I always have memories of he and John George down at Friendly's after the Selectmen's meeting, having a convincing of what went on. I won't talk about what they did before, but those kind of things can no longer kind of be done among us. But he was quite a character, and I, I enjoyed Jack's humor, his insight to the town, and his love for Danvers. It's sad in his passing. I've got a question for the Town Manager. I have some neighbors of mine that complained that one of the new streets behind us was semi-blocked off by signs that excluded vehicles of certain types. Carroll Drive is part of the development off Sandpiper, and there are two signs and restricted sawhorses on the road that limit traffic from, on that road. And I just happened to run into John Thompson over in Swanswick Sunday, and among our conversations, I asked him about it, because I said, John, remember, the, the Selectmen are the people that have the jurisdiction about what can and cannot be done in the roads in town. He said, well, that's not a road, that's, that's a private property. I says, oh, then you don't want us to plow it this winter? Well, he changed his mind real fast, and I know that the town has plowed roads as they were being built. I did it for several years up in Lakeview and Morgan Drive, for example, but I'd like to have you check in to see what they did and whether they did was legal or not. He does make a valid explanation. They want to keep any high, heavy-duty vehicles off the road because they just put a finished coat of hot top on the street, and they don't want to have it be damaged. And the final question, I have a personal question. What the hell's going on with Gates Field? It looks like it's a second war zone. All the land, all the soils were ripped off there and put in large piles, and I have no idea what the, what's going on. I never knew of anything that was going to be happening to that field, so maybe the Town Manager can enlighten me.
So, Bill, if I may, somebody brought it up on Facebook, and the response was that the soccer people, Danvers U.S. Soccer's working on the fields.
Well, the town of Danvers is working on it to a degree also, because I've seen town vehicles over there. I just want to know what's going on. Maybe they're preserving the, the stones to it, but I would think something of that magnitude should have at least been run by us and all the Recreation Commission prior because it's public property. And the Danvers soccer people do not own that property. They were allowed to be using it. It was supposed to be a school. It was supposed to be the playing fields for a school, and it was through the benevolence of the Board of Selectmen back many years ago that the soccer people were given a temporary permit to use that property.
Thank you for bringing it up. All set?
No, I'd like to know what's going on over there.
Are you all set with your comments?
Yes, I am, sir.
Thank you. Diane?
I don't have too much negative. Just want to remind people that the hazardous waste is Saturday, the 28th, and that you'll see probably Tuesday, the Rail Trail Committee is working on Hobart Street, putting in a picnic area. I only have positive things to say here, but the Haybarn Committee coming in front of us, is there any way we can move that to October 15th, seeing that I'm the liaison and I won't be here November 5th?
I think that's, I mean, the, I don't see why not. The 15th has a couple of...
The 5th or the 1st? It's October 1st.
No, 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 no. The, the Haybarn's coming in front of us November 5th.
Oh, November 5th.
And I wanted it to be, I was going to ask if we could do it October 15th.
That could make for a lengthy meeting on the 15th, because we have a couple of other substantive items, but that, that's something we could certainly talk about. There's no, I don't think, it's not a timing issue. They could be prepared before the 5th, but I think the, the agenda is pretty light for the 5th, and I think it could be a 30-minute presentation with Q and A, so.
Okay. And then, I just noticed on our consent calendar that the Addams Family is what the high school's doing for their musical theater. Great timing, seeing that there's a new movie out on that, too, so it's one of my favorites, See Addams Family. I thought that'd be a good one. I'm all set.
Thank you. So...
Did you miss me?
No, I didn't miss you. I was just floundering. Gardner?
So, I don't actually have any new business or, or follow-up, other than I think I got a correspondence that I, all of us may have gotten individually. It talked about litigation, and it was about, it was about 5G, and I forwarded that immediately to the Town Manager as soon as I heard anything relating to litigation, so it's off my plate and on his now. I have nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. I will mention to the community that the Kiwanis Annual Duck Race is September 28th, so you can go do your hazardous waste and get down to Pope's Landing. The ducks go in the water at 12:30. There's time to buy tickets. And we raise funds for scholarship for graduating Danvers seniors, so any support you can give us, come down and buy a duck ticket. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to remember veterans, current veterans serving, retired vets. Please thank the veterans when you see them. Thank you. Motion to close?
Sure.
Thank you. Was there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Aye. Goodnight, Danvers.